That thing he did in the business journal, and all the county doesn't help him at all. Put a lot of solid case on.
So Congress meeting in order, Budget Allegiance Supervisor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America's hands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I start to do the roll call.
Mr. Conover, Mr. payday, Mr. Diamond, Ms. Gilligan, Ms. Turner, Mr. Bruno, Mr. Driscoll, Mr. Patchett, Mr. Drossy, Mr. Bean, Mr. Crusito, Mr. Merlino, Mr. Straugh, Mr. Wild, Mr. McGowan, Mr. Strainer.
Here.
Mr. Eto'o, Mr. Thomas, Ms. Runyon, Chairman Garrity, form is established.
Okay. I would like to welcome everybody to our board meeting. First item of business to approve the minutes of the September twenty twenty four twenty 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 four board meeting and the October third twenty twenty four special board meeting. Motion by Supervisor Strainer, second by Supervisor E two. Any questions? All those are favors, second by five. Here. Next, if John Bow from uh four H is John's going to make some presentations of some citizenship awards. John?
Good morning.
The Matt Seton Assemblyman will also be presenting something to the awardees.
Good morning. For those of you that don't know me, I'm John Bow, the Director of Cornell Cooperative Extension of Warren County, but I think I've met most of you at this point. Today I'd like to introduce you to three residents of our county who exemplify four H in one of the more positive ways through citizenship and contribution. So today we have three different awards. Our top superintendent award is for Elise Morrow of Lake Luzerne. So Elise, if you'd come up here for us, please. The selection of the top superintendent is made by the entire four H team and is based on the junior professional demeanor during the job interview, their punctuality for scheduled work time, and the attitude they present during hours they were scheduled for. Elise sought out the additional work duties when her assigned work was completed and took on all duties of in a positive manner and attitude. So Elise, we'd like to present you with the Warren County Youth Fair Top Superintendent Award for twenty twenty four. Congratulations. And Kevin.
Yeah. It's great to be here to recognize some of our youth who are showing us what it's like to be participating in our communities and doing great things. And I would just like to represent or um recognize them for their achievements. And I have a New York State Assembly Citation that I would like to present to you.
Congratulations. We have Warren County, you have a little a letter, a little pen from the county. Also, just listening to some of your attributes, there are ones you're gonna have you go on a way when you get a little bit of over. So congratulations.
Thank you, Elise. For the second award, it's called the Spirit of Four H Award, and Ronan Core of North Creek is our recipient this year. The Spirit of Four H Award generally goes to a teen four H member who is act active at the local club and program level and at the New York State four H level. They are required to have participated in one of the following state teen action retreat or STAR, career explorations, and/or New York State Fair. Ronan has participated in all of those, I do believe, and Ronan served as a New York State Teen Superintendent for nearly two weeks this year during the New York State Fair. If you haven't stayed in the dormitories at the New York State Fair, it's a wonderful experience. But if it wasn't for these teens, that building, the youth building at the New York State Fair would not function. So it is very easy to award him this on behalf of Warren County four H. And this is Ronan's second year as the Spirit of Four H recipient. So Ronan, there you go. Then you're gonna stay here so that back can present you and Kevin.
And I have an assembly citation to present to you.
Thank you.
This station, thank you. Congratulations.
And Ronan, on behalf of the board supervisors, also we have a letter and a pen. Again, your attributes going to the fair, sure, yeah, it's fun. The judges make the total mark, right?
Right.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
No more climbing trees next year, right? Okay, the last one is a citizenship award, and this is new for us this year. Clay Lord of Queensbury, if you could come up here. New York State four H Office Staff Autumn Levine, who runs the youth building at the New York State Fair, called me and also emailed me and reached out to essentially let the county staff know that Clay had stepped up to support a fellow four H member at the New York State Fair. That Otsego County youth was a special needs youth and was attending with her legal guardian, also a four H educator, when that guardian fell ill and had to be removed from the fairgrounds to a hospital. Clay, on his own initiative, worked with the youth to make sure that they had someone to work and connect with, made sure they made it to their assigned locations on time, made sure that they had access to all the meals and events that sold the social services that are provided for the youth while they're there, and to get the youth into a help, get the youth into a temporary location. Clay's previously won the Spirit of Four H Award twice, which is our limit. So that's why we created a new award this year for this particular instance. So Clay, thank you very much and congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations. About the county office and the New York State Assembly. And on behalf of Warren County, letter and pen and announced to me like you are on the right path.
Thank you.
Thank you. If the three of you could come up.
Here to take a picture.
Their next item of business, we have to have a public hearing on Local Law Number Six, two thousand twenty four Local Law authorizing overriding of property tax cat limit established by General Municipal. And I ask the clerk to please leave the notice.
Notice is hereby given that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Warren, New York is considering the adoption of proposed Local Law Number Six for the year twenty twenty four entitled the Local Law to authorize overriding the property tax levy limit established by General Municipal Law Section Three C for the twenty twenty five Warren County budget. Notice is further given that pursuant to a resolution adopted by the Board of Supervisors on September twentieth twenty twenty four, a public hearing will be held by the Board of Supervisors on October eighteenth twenty twenty four at ten a.m. in the supervisors' rooms at the Warren County Municipal Center thirteen forty State Route Nine, Queensberry, New York, at which time and place all persons interested in the matter of such proposed Local Law Number Six for the year twenty twenty four will be heard concerning same. A copy of said local law is available for inspection during regular business hours by contacting the clerk of the Board of Supervisors at the above stated address and may be viewed on the Warren County website.
Okay, we'll declare this public hearing open. Does anyone wish to speak on the public hearing? Any supervisors wish to speak on the public here? Seeing none, we'll continue on. Next, we'll go to Privilege Four.
What? I am, I'm going to do that. I know what I'm doing.
Now, I'm gonna open up the floor. Assemblyman Simpson is here, and we're gonna allow him the first public comment.
Well, thank you, Chairman, and hello to everyone. It's great to be back here. It wasn't that long ago I sat over in that corner, and I've noticed since I left you have new blinds that I used to be blinded by the sun coming through those windows and couldn't see the front of the room. So what an improvement. That's great. But no, things are great. You know, we were out of session mid-June. It was a very lengthy session. We had a long budget season. We were very late in the budget. It was about twenty days, which is probably about average for New York State. There's a lot of, lot of issues to negotiate and a lot of conversations to have. All in all, there were some, there were some really good initiatives that were slated for cuts that ultimately were funded. All but some of them were flat, which we all know with the inflation, a flat from year to year now means essentially you're seeing a cut. I think you guys have all experienced difficulties with your budgets as probably all municipalities, as well as the state. The state, since I've been there, the budget has grown by sixty billion dollars. That's a, just an astronomical amount of money in a short period of time. And it's something that was started during COVID with the unexpected cost of that and tied with a lot of other issues. You know, we're all aware of the migrant crisis and the amount of money that is, that is going out to deal with that situation. And that's, that's a big unknown at the state level. There aren't any projections of what it's gonna cost, how we're gonna get out of it. There's a lot of uncertainty right now. I think you can see that in, in the newspapers and in the press. From my point of view, we need to do something at the national level to secure these borders and figure out a plan. This last year's budget combined, actually over the last two years, it's in excess of four billion dollars has been appropriated toward, towards the migrant crisis. And that doesn't account for the impacts on our schools, our healthcare providers, our food pantries, every, everybody that is part of supporting these people that are here in this country. I've asked for reports from the state on, on spending, and so far I've not received anything. I wanted to know what programs, what we're doing to get these people in a position where they can work, how they're gonna be able to be self-sustaining. I cannot get any information on New York State. Seems to be a lockbox. So I think this budget season going forward is gonna be very difficult. I think, you know, we've seen the effects of the affordability issue, the inflation, that affects New York State as well. You know, the healthcare costs for the state employees that goes up, all of those fixed things that you really don't have control over are impacting the state budget. And at the end of the day, it comes down to priorities. And I've been outspoken on the priorities. I think there are a lot of gaps, a lot of areas that we're not meeting the needs. It wasn't that long ago, I think, in our local press where I saw, I think you're all aware that we're becoming a graying community. Our young people are growing up here, they're going to school, and they're leaving the area. New York State actually this year led the country in outmigration. We need to do something about that because it's gonna trickle down to affect every municipal governmental operation and how we look at how we're gonna make our ends meet, and it's impacting the residents in our county and their, in a form of their property taxes, their school taxes. As I said, there was, there were many issues in the executive budget when it was proposed. There was a massive cut to foundation aid, which would have meant that our schools would have had to find another source of revenue, which would be school taxes, or make cuts to education of our kids. I saw some school districts that would have seen in excess of a fifty percent cut in foundation aid. And at the same time, we're dealing with added pressures from new people from other countries coming into our school systems without supporting programs and funding to support that. We were very fortunate to get the funding reinstated, but again, as I said before, it was flat. Well, we know that the cost of providing that education goes up from year to year. There are certain costs that you can't control. My opinion, there's no higher priority than education of our children, the care of our seniors, those that are most needing of our support in our country, in our state. And when I talk about priorities, that's where I think New York State is lacking in its priorities. So I, I'm looking forward to a very difficult budget season. I think this is the beginning. I know I've, you probably have all heard the old adage, the rooster's gonna come home. I think we're gonna, we're gonna see that eventually. Our economy is not growing fast enough to produce enough revenue to support our current way of, our current priorities and growth. So I've been spending all of my time since the end of session out in the district, and I'm hearing the same things from people. It's affordability, it's cost of living, it's opportunity. And, you know, our way out of this is meaningful economic development where people want to actually come here, start a business. And, you know, we've seen initiatives from the state. There's a huge economic focus in the central part of the state, Western New York, on the chip factory, and, you know, that's supported by taxpayers. There's more of that than there are people just coming here on their own because this is an attractive place to do business. And so those are some of the things that we're dealing with. I'm anxious to get back there in Albany and, and work on these issues. It's been a humbling experience. One thing that I'll say to you that I, that I've learned, you know, growing up in Warren County and being surrounded by my surroundings, you become not understanding, or you just don't have an understanding of what others are dealing with in other parts of the state. And I've been fortunate enough to go to the different parts of the state and see the different issues and actually see through some of my colleagues' lens why they're pushing certain issues. That doesn't mean they're wrong. It just means that we need to work together, find a solution that works for all New Yorkers. We're one New York, and we need to work together and get it done. And that's been my focus. I'm looking forward to getting back in January and working towards that goal. I hope that some of these things turn around. I think there's every one of my colleagues in the Assembly. We all have the same focus, and we want to do good things for New York. So I just appreciate the opportunity to come before you and, and speak. I also wanna, there's a couple of things I wanted to mention, and I wanted to commend Warren County on, and I see Kevin Hayes is here. I'm the ranking minority member on the Environmental Conservation Committee, and I've known the Chair, Assemblywoman Deborah Glick for a long time, even prior to when I went into the Assembly. And fortunately, we have somebody who is concerned about the Adirondacks in the North Country, and she does spend time here. You know, all of these issues all require a lot of conversations, a lot of collaboration and work, but there are many things that we are aligned on. The solid waste program, I want to commend Warren County for moving forward. I, I think that composting is something that we've got to figure out, and I'm, you know, a little sad to see that New York State hasn't had the bandwidth or the funding to support counties to get that off the ground as they should have, because it's gonna be costly to figure out that program. But I think it's gonna reap a lot of benefits to all of our communities and everybody's budget. You know, it's a no-brainer. Composting and the recycling effort. I'll also talk about something that I know, I received a lot of, lot of calls and a lot of contact within the district, and it's, it's a significant issue, and it's the bottle bill, the redemption fee on, on the bottle bill. But I think there's a lot of information that isn't out there in the public that people really need to know. Because on the surface, on all these issues, I get questioned all the time, why aren't you supporting it? Well, there's a lot more to it than that headline. There's a lot more deeper parts of that legislation that can have a negative effect. And here's one example of a budgetary issue. Currently, it's five cents to redeem your bottles and cans. Makes sense. The state has a proposal to raise it to ten cents. Not only that, they want to expand it to other containers. Sounds like a great idea. I'm not so sure we're ready to go to ten cents. The deeper dive into that legislation provides for a three and a half cents handling fee to all of our redemption centers. And that three and a half cent fee comes out of the unredeemed bottle deposit fund. Well, that fund is in excess of a hundred and twenty million dollars. Last time I checked. Twenty-three million dollars of that hundred and twenty-four plus or minus million goes to the Environmental Protection Fund, as it should. The rest of that money gets swept into the general fund. So you could theoretically do the math and say, if we go to ten cents without expanding to the containers, we could have two hundred million dollars going into the general fund, not going into the program to create a sustainable program and avoid all the closures of the redemption centers, which I'm sure a lot of you are aware of and have heard. It's a real issue, and I've found that a lot of these programs, it's not cut and dry. I think all of that money should go into the Environmental Protection Fund. It should go back into the infrastructure to support that program to make it easy for people to recycle, because if it's not easy for the consumer, it's gonna go into our garbage. Just like if it's not easy to have a compostable program or, you know, a deal, a way to deal with your solid waste, people are gonna find alternatives that cost less. So that's just an example of something that I was outspoken on. I voted no. I pushed hard against passing it to ten, passing the legislation that would raise it to ten cents because it's just wrong to have a program that's so critically needed to protect the environment, get this stuff out of the waste stream, but then take the vast majority of the money and put it in the general fund and see businesses closing that are supported by New York State. So.
Thank you for coming. Any questions for Matt? Supervisor McGowan?
Hey, Brad.
Thanks for, thanks for coming up, Matt, and I really appreciate it. And I'm so glad you heard me last time, and I'm not gonna throw on anything on you that we have talked about. A couple of things I think I'd bring back to down Albany is if we need to tell our lawmakers, when is enough enough? I, you know, I'm going through, you know, our appropriations, you know, and our budgeting stuff, you know, and I look at, and it's a little money here and there, but it adds up. But, you know, when do we stop to get a control of the spending? And it's so just easier to raise taxes, do that, but the, the main thing to bring back is when is enough gonna be enough? Because that's what's the main thing, is forcing people out of New York. I'm out of here as soon as I can get out of here, you know? I've had it. It, you know, it's just tax after tax, but it's not even that. I really want three Cs. The other thing to break down there on this bottle redemption stuff, remind people, it's all, it's, it's this recycling program is only gonna work, and this is what I brought up in the, the meetings, is teaching people, and it's creating new habits. Look how long it took us to get two recycling bins where we started separating our stuff, then to find out that the truck came around, threw it all in one, but now I see they're back to two trucks again. That's great for the plastics, you know? What are we gonna do with the other plastic? Because there's only two plastics we recycle, but there's seven grades out there. What are we doing with the other plastics, you know? To reuse them. But remind people on the bottle redemption, twenty bottles per bucket. That's the way I look at it. And I'll pick up, you know, on the job site, and I'll put all my bottles, and they, they look at me, oh, you're cheap. No, I'm not cheap, but they all add up. For fifteen years, I put everything in a five-gallon jug. All my bottle returns, okay? And I said, ah, let's crack into it because we want to go on vacation. It was just shy of twelve hundred bucks just for the bottles. That was all soda. There was no beer in that one, all right? But, you know, but for twenty years, we faithfully put our coins in there. So it's amazing. But I want to thank you for coming up and, and the hard work you're doing down there. I just feel that we need larger voices, but we need a change like you've mentioned. So, but thank you again.
Supervisor. I want to respond to Brad.
Okay.
I think most people want to recycle, but it's gotta be a system that works. It, it can't be, you know, you know, a shift of a hundred million dollars into, you know, spending that has nothing to do with the environment or the reason why we're recycling. If we had that money in the Environmental Protection Fund, we could help counties get off the ground with composting and some of these other efforts and expanding the recycling effort, but we need those support funds, as you said.
Take it out of the general and, and give it to some of the counties that are starting to approach it.
So I.
Something we can go for.
The second thing, the other second thing I want to, the second thing I want to respond to is you can turn on the Assembly New York State website and watch our debates, and you can see that we are outspoken on all these issues. But what you can do to help us is get more involved with NISAC, town supervisors get more involved with Association of Towns. They're a voice in Albany, but they need a much larger group of people and more of a voice. They can be helpful. They, we communicate with them on a almost daily basis during session on pushing priorities. Sometimes they're effective, you know, they're, we're, we're able to get legislation done. Other times it's not, but that's something that you can do to help us as your representatives.
Supervisor.
Thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to point out that, in fact, Matt for coming. Part of his responsibilities are certainly policy issues, and, and the public can agree or disagree with, with him on those issues. But I want to point out that much of the work that an elected official does is, is constituent services stuff. I know that when I call the Assemblyman's Office, whether I'm a Democrat or a Republican, I, I get foots on the, boots on the ground right away, and they're, they're addressing issues. And I think the, the, the strength of any elected official is the people that they surround themselves with. You know, we have a former supervisor here today, and again, if you have an issue, contact the office because they're gonna get results for you. Thank you.
Supervisor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Matt, you mentioned a little bit about the economy, and I think it's good that the state is pushing money towards investing in new chip plants in, in the Lake Huron, the, in the state. But one of the things in support of the economy that really doesn't get much attention is the retention of our existing businesses. They struggle with the taxes that exist in New York State. They struggle with the energy prices in New York State. And I know being the minority party, there's a supermajority in the state, the Assembly and the Senate, so it's hard to get things done. But if you, if you wouldn't mind, you know, try to grab your team and pull something together to help our existing businesses because we don't want to lose them. It's great to bring new ones in. It's difficult to bring new ones in, but we need to think about our existing manufacturing and commercial businesses and make sure that they're able to survive in New York State, and we don't lose those businesses, and we don't lose those jobs. Thank you, Matt.
Thanks. I'm responding. We do actually have a bill-by-bill outline, a package of bills, exactly to address those issues. And we bring them up every single session. You'll see in January, every single one of them will be filed. It's a public document that I can share with you and show you some of the initiatives, and we're gonna keep pushing them.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Chairman. Matt, first, thank you for your, your kind comments about Warren County's initiative on solid waste and recyclables, something that, in fact, may have legislation here for today that we take a lot of pride in. take a lot of pride in that we have really, I think, a great partnership with the private sector, zero waste and others to hopefully move forward in a, in a coherent way. One other thing, you're, I, I would really commend you for continuing to press to try to get real answers to what the financial cost is associated with some of our new visitors. You know, I saw something the other day that just the House of New York City alone ran into the billions of dollars. You know, if you do some simple math, whether it's eight million, 10 million, 20 million, whatever number you want to pick, it's a huge, huge number. And I think the leadership really needs to tell us how they're planning to pay for that. Otherwise, what's going to happen, I fear, is a lot of that's going to get pushed down to the local level, going to push down to the school districts. And at a time when we're hard pressed to, to come up with the money for those types of, for those types of costs. In fact, we have legislation in front of us that you can see this evening to even go through a tax gap. So it would be good to know what that real cost is, I mean, the real cost, and to have a plan for how we're going to pay for these things.
I would agree with you. I mean, it's, it's, you know, an issue that we're very vocal and focused on because of there are other areas in the budget that are not being addressed. Our safety net programs, you know, and then when the state does withdraw funding or support for a program, even if it's a few percentage points, it has a direct impact on your budget. You end up filling that gap. And ultimately, it's the property taxpayers in Warren County. So those things we do understand and we're looking at those. We bring it up and frankly, I'll tell you, the response that we get is, it's priorities. I actually met with several counties' Office of the Aging and the State Director. And she's requesting significant funding to meet the need. The need is ever increasing for our aging population. Their budgets are stretched very thin while the need is growing at a rapid rate. And it comes down to priorities. And if I've heard it once, I've heard it 100 times in the New York State Assembly on the floor at the end of budget. And you can see for yourself, if you turn into the budget sessions, our budget is a statement of our priorities. So I'm left to say, I think our priorities are misplaced in New York State.
Anyone else?
Seeing none. Again, thank you, Matt, for coming again and.
Thank you, Chairman.
Yeah.
And thank all of you. If there's anything that I or my office can do to assist any one of, any, all of you or any of your constituents, please reach out. This is the real meat and potatoes of what we do. Constituent service is, is the highest priority of our job. It's not focused on politics and, you know, we're working on legislation, but the priority is constituent service and, and meeting the needs of our, our residents. So anything we can do, please reach out. Don't hesitate. I think everybody's probably got my cell phone number. I always answer unless I'm in a meeting. So.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there any other public comment? Is there any public comment on a public hearing on the override? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. And we'll move on to report of Chairman. On the 20th, I attended board meetings, the 24th, 25th. On the 25th, I went to APA Local Government in Long Lake. The 26th committee meetings. On the 30th, we met with the new Department Labor Representative for the Capital Region along with Liza and Liza Ossendorf and John Tafflin, myself. And on the October 2nd, I went to AATV, AATV meeting in Nerven. On the 3rd, attended committee meetings. October 7th, went to say goodbye to Anne Marie over at SUNY Anaronda, who's taking a job with RPI. We're going to miss her. She was good doing the budgeting over there. And the 15th, I attended a special Parks O and M Committee meeting. So we'll start with Supervisor Cazito on your.
On September, thank you, Mr. Chairman, on September 26th, Environmental Concerns and Real Property Tax Committee met. Their budget, Lexi discussed the budget and at the Budget Officer's request, she has come in 5% lower than last year. Also, I want to apologize for everyone for missing the meeting, the picture today. I know everybody's time is valuable, so I'm sorry about that. Thank you. That's it for me.
Thank you, Ben. Supervisor Merino.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, as far as occupancy, tax and tourism, I have no report. It's been quiet. But a couple of notes that I'd like to bring out. Monday, we have an oc tax meeting right here in this room. And I'm asking all the people on, on the oc tax tourism committee, try to be at this meeting. It's going to be a little on the long side. And if you didn't go downstairs and get a book, this book here is downstairs, See Paul. It's got every, there's 52 applicants for money in this book. And we need everybody there to listen to this, what they want. And out of that 52, it totaled up to be 1,400,000 in requests. Roughly, we have, without tapping into any reserve funds, we have 700,000 to give away. So it's going to be a tough meeting and I wish everybody would make sure they try to get there. You know, if you don't have a book, See Paul, he's got one for everybody. And I think Kevin and the Administrator has their books. The only thing, Matt, thank you. Personal friends for a lot of years, somewhere in the 20 area. And we've worked well together. You did a lot for the county and you do a lot for the little towns like Lake Luzerne. And, and your hard bodyguard there, good people, call them, they'll answer the phone and they'll get back to you if you get an answering machine. Appreciate all that. With that, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Supervisor Schraub.
Yeah, thank you. Legislative Rules and Government Operations Committee met October 30. You have two resolutions before you, 356 and 357. 356 is the appointment of Stephanie Dillon as Special Court Clerk effective June 6, 2024, and continuing for the term of office for what's the current Board of Supervisors were elected. And 357, which is approving necessary expenses incurred by the county clerk under tax law 262, and authorizing submission to the Commissioner of New York State Department of Taxation and Finance for covering the cost out of the mortgage tax of $197,743.51. And that's it for me. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Supervisor Wild.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Personnel, Administration, and Higher Education met also on October 30. There are seven resolutions before the Board that I hope you can consider supporting. 370 are creating and deleting positions within the workforce development and public works organizations. 371 is approving the standard workday and time reporting resolutions for all elected and appointed officials for retirement purposes. 372, policy for use of copyright materials. And this has been a suggestion out of the County Attorney's Office that we should copyright some of our works. So I hope I get your support there. 373, participation in the opioid settlement agreements with Target Corporation, Henry Schein Incorporated, and Henry Schein Medical Systems. 374, proposed local law 7 of 2024, repealing local law 4 of 2008, adopting and ratifying certain employee benefits for county employees outside various bargaining units. And this is something more of a housekeeping issue that we needed to deal with. 375, agreement in New York State Industries for the disabled to provide male fulfillment services in support of tax foreclosures. And 376, the last, is an agreement for telephone service upgrades and site equipment for upgrading our telephone systems. So I thank you for your support, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much.
Supervisor McGowan.
No report.
Supervisor Strang.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Health Services met on September 24th and from that came Resolution 352, authorizing agreement with the Governor's Traffic Safety Committee for Child Passenger Car Seat Grant Program Funding. That was the only resolution to come from the meeting. Also, I'd like to thank Janelle Jones and Rob York and Dee Park for how hard they worked on their budgets. They were hit with some mandates that cost us a lot of money. They did a very good job and I want to thank them. Other than that, that's it, Chairman.
Okay. Supervisor Eto'o.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Economic Growth and Development met on September 26th. Resolutions 346 through 348 are before us. They all have to do with applying for grant funds, including for the food composting program that the Assemblymen mentioned. Also for the fish hatchery and for some trail connections. On October 12th, our Workforce Development Department facilitated another job fair. I went to it. It was at Crandall Library. West Mountain was there. The Sheriff's Office was there. Glenswells National Hanaford Steamboat Company, who was very well put on and a lot of great engagement with eager job seekers. And lastly, if you see Sarah Frankenfeld, our GIS Administrator, give her a big congratulations. She received the Wild Stewardship Award from Adirondack Wild for her efforts to promote the Adirondack Forest Preserve and the First Wilderness Heritage Quarter. Thank you.
Supervisor Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Finance and Budget met on October 3rd. And from that meeting, we have 22 resolutions. So bear with me, take a couple of minutes. Resolution 333 is amending the 2024 county budget. There's transfers for five departments, airport, DPW, health services, planning, probation, and solid waste. And we spent the remainder of the contingent account, $32,313 for consulting fees to, and transfers to capital projects. Resolution 334, amending, again, amending the 2024 budget with estimated revenues and appropriations for assigned council, health services, Office of Emergency Services, Sheriff, Social Services, and Workforce Development, a total amount of $1,734,765.90. Resolution 377 increases Capital Project H422 Airport. It's $14,195.52 for runway 19. Resolution 378 appropriates 20,000 again for the airport from the repair and projects reserved to Capital Project H431, demolition and construction of six, six bays, tea hangers. Resolution 379 establishes Capital Project H435 Airport Master Plan 2024 in an amount of $762,222. Local share is $38,112, again, from the, from A892 Airport Reserve. Resolution 380 authorizes transfer from Airport Reserve of $38,112 for this master plan. Resolution 381 authorizes appropriation of $75,000 from the general fund balance to A1185, 435, for medical examiner and foreigner fees to cover the estimated cost for the remainder of 2024. Resolution 382 is a budget item that authorizes appropriation of $182,500 from the general fund balance, A909, to various department codes for equipment purchases that were requested in their budget requests for 2025. And we prefer to purchase them now and save raising tax levy to pay for them. Resolution 383 authorizes agreement with the longest, lowest responsible bidder for performance and leadership training. And I believe this is ORPA dollars through the workforce development. Resolution 384 authorizes an agreement with contractor to be determined for upgrades to the boardroom. Resolution 385 authorizes appropriation of $3,000 from the A909 general fund balance to the County Attorney, Attorney's Office to cover litigation expenses incurred from lawsuits without insurance coverage. Resolution 386 increases Capital Project H376, Hutchins Street over Mill Creek Bridge replacement, and authorize the transfer of $380,950 federal grant dollars. Resolution 387 authorizes appropriation of $293,466 from A909 general fund balance to the Social Services Department for the cost of court ordered detention expenses for the remainder of 2024. Resolution 388 appropriates $4,750 from A895 Computer Reserve to DPW County Clerk and Planning GIS. Resolution 389 increases the Capital Project H356, First Wilderness Plan Implementation, 2014, by $9,675.35. Resolution 390 increases Capital Project H372 also for the First Wilderness Plan Implementation of 2016 by $9,345.98. Resolution 391 increases the Capital Project H380, promoting the, promoting the First Wilderness Corridor by $409.28. Resolution 392 increases Capital Project H383, through lake invasives, species prevention and control program by $603.80. Resolution 393 authorizes the Treasurer to close Community Development Fund, CD75, and Capital Projects, H356, H372, H380, H382, and H383. H382 returns $2,448 to A909 general fund balance. Resolution 394 establishes Capital Project H436, SUNY Adirondack High Voltage Electrical Infrastructure Replacement Project, estimated cost of $1,400, source of funds is serial bonds. Resolution 395 authorizes appropriation of $1,400 from the A909 general fund balance to the Capital Project H436, this electrical project. And last but not least is 396. And that's enacting local law number six of 2024. It's local law to authorize exceeding the property tax levy limit for the year 2025 Warren County Budget. And that's it for the resolutions. As, as far as the budget, the budget's coming, coming along. I think, I think we will exceed the tax gap, but I don't think it will be by an excessive amount. But I do think we go over. Thank you.
Supervisor Runyon.
No report.
Supervisor Conover.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Public Works Committee, the business of the Public Works Committee is represented in your neck by Resolutions 358 through 368. I believe most of them are self-explanatory. If any justice here has any questions. But I would like to comment on 364 to say that I believe the town, the Department for Tax Brains, application request to help with that program. And 365, I'd like to thank the Friends of Upyanda for their excellent support of the Upyanda Farm, represented by Resolution 365 and that day. The, as was mentioned earlier, 366, 367, and 368 are really all related. 368 deals with the actual transport of solid waste and recyclables. 367 and 366 deal with the disposal. And you should all have received. If you haven't, you can obtain them from the, the county clerk. The really significant savings associated with, with these resolutions. They vary from town to town depending on municipality, depending upon the miles of transport. But generally speaking, they represent efficiencies running from 30% to 60%. And this, of course, this is a, a service that the towns themselves. And just of course, this is a service that the towns themselves, the participating town are going to be paying for. And I think we're going to have not only better service, but I think that is going to take us, help us move in a direction to achieve other efficiencies relating to composting and other solid waste disposal matters. And all of this really tracks its way back to, I think, two years ago. Please hold your applause. With this board, I, I think with good visions, saw fit to support a position in the Public Works Department, solid waste administrator. And we did that at the time believing that we could do good things. And I think today's legislation really is an excellent example of what we can achieve when we're all working together from a common end. And hopefully, this is going to be one of a number of, of initiatives that comes forward to this board that represents efficiencies and, and savings and of course, and doing better as it relates to the environment. And, and on the disposal side, I mean, I think that what we're hoping for there is that as we learn more about the disposal process and the markets and whatever, we make certain alliances in the disposal markets that we can find better markets for the actual disposal of the recyclable. And which can, of course, generate that much more revenue, which can, which is good for the environment, but it's also good for the economics of, of the program. So I would ask for your support of these three resolutions today. And I just want to commend Mr. Heyjos and his staff and our allies, partners, Zero Waste and others that really have been so supportive of this project. Thank you.
Supervisor Mayday.
No report.
Supervisor Diamond.
No report.
Supervisor Gillian.
No report.
Supervisor Turner.
No report.
Vacation was good though.
Vacation was wonderful. Thank you.
Supervisor Bruno.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. County facilities met on September twenty-sixth. Resolutions three seventy-seven through three eighty were referred to finance and budget as a result of that meeting. The only other thing I'll mention is the design updates, the front entrance of this building, municipal center. Committee was advised that two hundred thousand dollars remained in the port project. And that funding will be used to address the front steps. Careful when you go out there for your photo. And front steps and some drainage issues, but there's not enough funding to cover all the green space plans in the design, but we'll address those at a later date. And that concludes my report.
Supervisor Gustav.
Thank you, Chairman. From the September twenty-fourth Human Services Committee meeting came three resolutions, three fifty-three, three fifty-four, and three fifty-five. Three fifty-three deals with the, an agreement for a registered dietitian at the Countryside Adult Home. Fifty-four is an agreement with OmniCare for stock medical medications and supplies, savings to the county. And three fifty-five is a memorandum of understanding with Washington County provide, for Warren County to provide administrative services for the County Youth Bureau, a by-county partnership that is really working out very well. There will be no Human Services Committee meeting this coming Tuesday, October twenty-second. This coming Monday, the twenty-first of October. Cornell Corporate Extension of Warren County will be holding its annual meeting at the Holiday Inn in Lake George. That begins at six o'clock. If you want to go to that, I would get in touch with Corporate Extension before the end of the day today. Later on this afternoon, I will be representing Warren County at the Special Olympics ceremony and opening remarks. Thank you to the chairman for that invitation. And that concludes my report.
Supervisor Pageant.
No report.
Supervisor Drossy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Criminal Justice Public Safety and Emergency Services Committee met on September twenty-fourth. As a result, you've got resolutions three thirty-five through three forty-five for your consideration. And mainly, they deal with agreements and applications. Two of them are for the Public Defender's Office, two for the DA, three for emergency services, and four are for the sheriff's office. We appreciate all the department heads at the last meeting giving us a summary of their budget. And I think we have a good understanding of where they're looking for next year. Our next meeting is this coming Tuesday at nine AM. Thank you.
Supervisor Bean.
No report.
All right. Report of county administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We received a letter this month from CDTA expressing their appreciation to the Board of Supervisors for your support in their transition to providing bus service in Warren County. And they said, overall, the transition has been very successful. There were some route changes, seasonal route changes, the trolley service that you see that goes to Glens Falls, Bolton, and Lake George stop on October fourteenth. And that resumes again in the spring. CDA, CDTA will resume routes along Route Nine that were replaced by the trolley service. And their east-west commuter will serve more neighborhoods in downtown Glens Falls. CDTA plans to evaluate new route options based on the data they've collected. But with the pending retirement of Carmen Sill, who is the president and CEO, a change is probably won't happen on his watch and probably not until mid, probably spring of next year possibly. Warren County should move to nominate a board member for the CDTA board beginning in twenty twenty-five. So I'll follow up with procedures and the steps we need to take to do that. Sales tax update. Washington County discussed their sales tax increase at their finance committee meeting on October tenth. There was no decision and, or no decision to take the discussion to the full board today. Doesn't mean there won't be a discussion about it today, but it looks like further sales tax increase discussions will probably not occur in either Warren or Washington County for the remainder of this year. For those of you who have not heard, Lake George Coalition has put Winter's Dream event on hold for this winter on a pause. The earliest Winter's Dream could continue will be winter twenty-five, twenty-six. So next year, the four hundred thousand award that the board approved in August will be rescinded at the November board meeting, and the funds returned to the occupancy tax reserve. On nine October, Kevin Heyjos and I attended a mega presentation on establishing a community solar relationship between the county and the solar providers who are building solar projects at Floyd Bennett Airport. It seems pretty beneficial to the county, and we'll be bringing that to a discussion to the facilities committee on October twenty-third. At the Park Operations and Management Committee meeting on October fifteenth, this week, there was a discussion on potentially using deferred revenue from Charles R. Wood Park to purchase or lease a synthetic ice rink to be installed on Beach Road parking lot for this winter. After the meeting, through following discussions, it was determined that the town and the village of Lake George would partner to either purchase or lease the ring for those winter months. We would not use deferred revenue for that. Employee anniversary dates. Kim Campney from Social Services at twenty years, Jennifer Quarters, Countryside at twenty-one. Michael Husky, District Attorney at twenty-two. Maureen Taylor, Social Services, twenty-five. Claudia Mundell, Treasurer, twenty-five, and Amy McBurn at Countryside Adult Home, thirty-three. There are forty-two names on this sheet, and two-thirds of them have less than ten years, and half of them have less than five years. So congratulations to HR and, and civil service and all of our department heads who've done a great job out there recruiting new talent for the county, and we appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Report of county attorney.
Good morning. The last month has been a busy month on the legal front. I will provide a detailed update on litigation and lawsuits at the next Personnel Committee meeting. I do want to note that on Wednesday of this week, October sixteenth, we did receive from the Supreme Court our judgment of tax foreclosure, which was wonderfully timed because the tax auction is Saturday. The registration begins at the Warren County Courthouse at eight AM, and the auction will begin at ten AM. And our office, the treasurer's office, and the Director of Real Property Tax Services are fielding and will continue to field, I imagine, through the end of today, last minute requests to stay particular properties which is being filed by attorneys or individuals on their own. That's my report. Subject to any questions that any members of the board may have.
Supervisor McGowan, you had a question for John?
Yes, thank you, John. On the CDTA, is there any ridership information numbers in areas that you can share?
They haven't provided those to us yet, but he did assure me that by the end of the year, they would be giving us ridership data. So as soon as I, I get that, I'll make it available to the board.
Thank you. All right. Will you go, go send it to me?
Sure, yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, reading communications.
We have the county auditor's real property tax corrections report for the month of September twenty twenty-four. Capital District Regional Off-Track Beddings Financial Report dated May thirty-one and June thirty, twenty twenty-four. And we also received Washington County Resolution Number two eighty-one of twenty twenty-four, which was consenting to Warren, Washington County IDA's undertaking of an industrial development project in the town of Queensberry.
Okay. We'll go to reading of resolutions.
Proclamation numbers thirty-five through thirty-nine, the report of committee on assessment roles and resolution numbers three thirty-three through three ninety-six are posted to the Warren County website and distributed to the members of the Board of Supervisors on Tuesday, October seventeenth. The proclamations before you are number thirty-five Fire Protection Week, number thirty-six Youth Substance Use Prevention Month, number thirty-seven Breast Cancer Awareness Month, number thirty-eight Green Light for Military Service County, and thirty-nine Appreciation to Accra Shore. Resolutions, let's see, number three fifty-seven was posted, that was to include two pages for its Schedule A. It was posted on the seventeenth with both schedules. However, what's in your packets only had one page of that. I did just hand out the second page. So just to clear the record, we need a motion to amend Resolution three fifty-seven just to include both Schedule A documents.
Do we have a motion to amend by Supervisor Bean, second by Supervisor Wild? Any discussion? All those favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Okay.
Carry.
Resolution number three ninety-four, that was amended after mailing to add language allowing the county treasurer to advance funding. That was based on a request from the county treasurer's office. So we need to amend Resolution three ninety-four. The revised copy is in your packets.
Yeah, motion.
We just need to amend that.
Commended. Motion by Supervisor Driscoll, second by Supervisor Marino. Any discussion? All those favor signify saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, care.
Okay. And then as part of that, the, what we added to number three ninety-four made three ninety-five no longer necessary. So we would need a motion to withdraw three ninety-five.
We have motion by Supervisor Bean, we have second by Supervisor Thomas. Any discussion? All the favor signify saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, care.
Okay. And lastly, there are a lot of roll call votes this month. A number of them are making appropriations to increase, close, establish capital projects, things like that. So if there's no objection, we'd like to combine the roll call votes for resolutions three seventy-seven through three eighty-two and three eighty-five through three ninety-four.
What's the pleasure of the board? Is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Seeing no objections, we will.
Three seventy-seven to what?
Three seventy-seven to three eighty-two, and then three eighty-five to three ninety-four. That'll all be one vote for all of those resolutions.
Okay. Does anybody have to recuse themselves for any votes on any resolutions? No recusal. Yes. Yes.
No, I don't have a recusal. What, sorry, I was reading, because I had a question on one of the, what was the, the other set of numbers?
Three eighty-five through three ninety-four.
Yeah, I eighty-nine and ninety-two. I I wanted to keep that as a roll call separate. I don't want to throw it in with, you know, all the ones that I want to say yes to and some I want to say no to.
Which, which ones?
Three eighty-nine to three ninety-two. And then three eighty-five to three eighty-eight. And then three ninety-three to what?
Hold on. Eighty-five.
We'll just leave them separate.
We'll just leave them separate then.
You could, you can bump it down as three categories instead of all of them.
So you're, you're proposing three eighty-nine to three ninety-two in one, and then three eighty-five to three eighty-eight?
Right. And then, and then three ninety-three to three ninety-five.
Three ninety-five has been withdrawn, so.
All right, so three ninety-four.
All right, discussion on resolutions. Supervisor McGowan.
All right, discussion. CDTA. I, I want to discuss on three eighty-one. The medical examiner and coroner budget there asking for another seventy-five thousand. Now, I know we've been working on, you know, something with the future, which maybe a regional morgue, which, you know, is really just taken off to way further figures than I would have ever imagined. But I just want to make that a point of how important this was, you know, this is, because this is covering for the remaining of the year seventy-five thousand dollars. The cost of the autopsies is going to Binghamton and this and that. So you know, something, not that we could do right away, but I know it's been in discussion. I started this many years ago. And Supervisor Bruno is, is taking it over and it something that we really need to look at or think about if we're, we're serious or not, but just to keep in the back of the mind, you know, that's the cost of that for it's, and that. And the other, if it's possible, I would like a roll call on three eighty-four. Three eighty-four, I mean, here we are going into budget season and we really don't, we, we really need to look at the costs of, you know, everything we do. And I don't want to nickel dime everything, which I could pretty much do going through everything because they do add up. Like I said, twenty bottles for a dollar, you know? But here we are. It authorizes an agreement with a contractor determined for the upgrades to the boardroom. And I want, is that a necessary rate now when we don't have the money? I mean, just seeing it, it's a small amount of money. But this seems to have worked for years. It's worked. But what I'd like to see is maybe a better in
Here, audio.
Thank you. Audio system and recording. A lot of people have a problem hearing us online and, and on TV, especially me, because I guess I have this bellowing, deep, loud voice. And I, I come across marbled, and I want everybody to hear every word I say. But that'd be something I look into. But I mean, here we are. I mean, the curtains look great. All right. They do cut the blare. But what, what I had envisioned was more of a honeycomb where you could get a little bit more of an insulation factor for one, and two, where you don't get it. The sun does come through those. But that wasn't my decision to, you know, to make. I, I wish I would have had more insight in seeing it because, you know, we spent a lot of money for those. And they, you know, they do help dampen the light, but they do not stop that sunshine from beating across. And, and you could see it in the reflection in your lap, your laptops there of the sun makes it hard to see you guys. And also, when we have to look over there, you know, sometimes I have to put on my, my sunglasses because, you know, I, I like to see everybody's happy, smile facings on the other side and, and welcome back. I hope you had a great trip. So but that's something is, is really, we're coming into the budget season, and I'm going through everything in the appropriations that I see that we're making. There's a lot of, you know, a lot of big numbers in there, especially coming out. There's a lot of, you know, a lot of big numbers in there, especially coming out of the, uh, the sheriff's department for, you know, other equipment. You know, uh, so. Roll call for three eighty four.
Uh, any other discussions on resolutions, supervisor Padgett?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I am seeking some clarification to the, from the appropriate person on resolution number three seven four. This resolution, um, in my mind is reading that we've got two conflicting previous resolutions. And that we are, in fact, rescinding benefits on, in two separate ways. Uh, one, paying out accrued and unused sick time benefits upon certain employees. And two, reimbursing certain employees for the cost of job-related certifications and coursework. So who are certain employees, I guess is another question. I, I don't, it doesn't clarify that in here, but if somebody could explain this in a way that's understandable, that'd be great.
Classic county attorney to explain your resolution.
Yeah, I, I think it's an excellent question because it's a confusing situation. So I'll start with just the general legal rule and principle that in municipal government, a local law carries more weight and is more permanent than a resolution. And the reason for that is, is the process to enact a local law takes more process and steps than to enact a resolution. So therefore, when a municipal body enacts a, a local law, like the Board of Supervisors for Warren County, they're doing it because it's a, it's a topic or an item at the time that they want to lock in and keep a little more secure from a mere resolution, which would just take a one-time majority vote to pass. In two thousand and eight, Warren County enacted a local law, local law eight of two thousand and eight. And in that local law, it provided two specific benefits only for the employees who are out of unit. So that local law did not have any application on any Warren County employee who was a member of a union. Whether it's the CSEA or any of the other unions that are under the sheriff's office employees. For that one group of employees, local law eight of two thousand and eight is my general understanding was enacted to mirror the benefits that were being provided to union members who were also county employees regarding two areas. One is the payout of sick time upon retirement. And the other is the ability to get reimbursement for education expenses. The local law was enacted, it was filed with the Secretary of State. I cannot say why, and I, I do not know exactly why. But in twenty thirteen and again in early twenty twenty one, two resolutions came before the Board of Supervisors, which materially changed those two benefits. The twenty twenty one resolution was a comprehensive policy for all out-of-unit employees. A portion of that policy dealt with the payout of sick time and reimbursement for educational expenses. This past summer, when asked to work on some other issue, it came to our office's attention that local law eight of two thousand and eight was there. We could not find that any local law was enacted to revoke or rescind it. So therefore, the resolutions in twenty thirteen and twenty twenty one could not change those two specific employee benefits for out-of-unit employees only. So what this local law is seeking to do is to revoke and cancel local law eight of two thousand and eight. Actually, it's, it's to schedule the public hearing for the next board meeting to cancel local law eight of two thousand and eight. And through the committee process, process this month, propose the, a policy, I believe, that would be consistent with what was enacted in twenty thirteen and twenty twenty one. And those policies on sick time was to remove the benefit for employees hired after the twenty thirteen resolution. And for the educational benefits in twenty twenty one, it was to increase reimbursement from fifty percent to a hundred percent as a general statement. So through the committee process, the goal is to line up resolutions that will reflect what the board in the past has tried to accomplish on these two benefits. So that they'll be consistent with the current labor union collective bargaining agreements in effect as of the next board meeting. Are there any questions on that before I hit the last piece? Because that's, that's a lot. The last piece is, what about all the employees who came on board prior to the next board meeting when local law aid of two thousand and eight revoked? So before I hit that, is there any questions on anything I just said?
So it appears we're increasing the benefits for job-related certifications and coursework from fifty to a hundred percent. Is that correct?
No.
No?
No, this resolution sets the public hearing so that after the public hearing at the next board meeting, the board is in a position to revoke the local law. And then as part of the resolutions that will hopefully come through the committee, if the committee approves them, put in place policies either consistent with the policies that were attempted to put in place by prior resolutions but are ineffective. But we need to revoke that local law because any employee who comes on now as a new employee will receive that legal benefit that was first stated in local law eight of two thousand and eight as to sick time. And we're in the uncomfortable position of employees after two thousand and one who sought reimbursement or technically only authorized reimbursement at fifty percent, not a hundred percent. And I believe through the committee process, we'll be able to have a fix for that as well.
Supervisor Trager.
Didn't this come from the sheriff's office?
No.
Wasn't there like, at that time, I remember we had four lieutenants or sergeants or something that didn't want to be in the bargaining unit?
There's, there's two groups, but the, the sheriff's office really isn't the core group. It's the out-of-unit employees for Warren County. That's the larger group of county employees that are impacted by local law aid of two thousand and eight. There was also a subdivision for a couple of those members, a couple of members of the sheriff's office.
Good.
But the larger issue and the concern is correcting it to, so that the out-of-unit benefits mirror what the counties have moved, the county has moved towards with the collective bargaining agreements.
Supervisor Bruno.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, just a clarification here. The information I'm reading talks about local law number four, I just want to be sure we're talking about the right one. And you're referring to local law number eight?
Yeah, I apologize. It's local law four of two thousand and eight.
Okay, I just want to be sure we're. Talking about, thank you.
Yep.
Good one, Dan.
Supervisor Diamond.
I should have looked down at my paperwork. My apologies, I misspoke.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a question around resolution three eighty four. The way this resolution is written, we're going to authorize today an agreement with a contractor to be determined uh, for upgrades to the board of the Warren County Municipal Center. My question is, we're not utilizing the bid process? I mean, we're going to authorize that the chairman can sign an agreement. However, we don't know what that cost is. We do not know who the contractor is. I'm, I'm kind of uncomfortable with doing that. Simply because I'd like to know who the contractor is at the time, and I'd like to know how much it's going to cost us to do the upgrades. So I think I would be, that was requested to be a roll call vote. Uh, so I'll probably, I will be voting against that resolution today. Not that I don't want to see the upgrades done, but it's the way we're proceeding with the awarding of this, not knowing who the contractor is, not knowing how much. You want to respond, John?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, remind everyone on three eighty four. And so we had discussions at committee. Uh, this is basically, we have about roughly seven hundred thousand dollars in ARPA money that will not be spent. So we're bringing that ARPA money back into the county. We have to obligate that, those ARPA funds by the thirty first of December. The, the federal government has given us the authority to spend this money. But if we don't obligate it by the end of December, uh, it will be returned to the treasury. So we have two options that we've discussed with the board and the committees um, going forward. One is the re, the redo of the boardroom. And I just remind you, I'll point to the cameras in the back. Uh, that screen is what your constituents see when they tune into our meetings, mostly blank faces. Uh, I could spend a significant amount of money on an audio system for this boardroom because we got a lot of complaints about not having good audio system, audio. And as long as we keep these hard walls up, we learned this as we went through the design phase that you, the board authorized us to do with LaBella. Unless we do something to the walls to put some acoustic type of tile or backing up there, the best audio system you have is not going to work. So the other thing we wanted to do, because there's nothing we can do with the committee room to make that more excessive. A lot of, a lot of you have complained to me about not being able to hear in that room. It's because of the air handling units and we don't have the money to replace those. So we intend to move the committee room to, into the boardroom, and there'll be a committee table like we had in the past. And that's all part of this effort. Um, and again, it's using ARPA money. Uh, if we don't use the ARPA money, in this case, uh, we probably won't have an ability to award another contract in the amount of time and bring it back to the board for discussion. And get that money obligated against a bid. There will be bids for this contract. Uh, we expect a, a design to be completed next week. Three hundred thousand dollars is probably going, going to be reasonable, we believe. The additional money, uh, superintendent Heyjoe's plans to look at the roof of this building, which dramatically, drastically needs to be replaced. And we don't think we'll have enough money to do all of it, but we're in position to award a contract to fix the roof so it doesn't leak down in some of the rooms. So that's, that's basically, that's the intent of three eighty four. Uh, if we delay till November to approve that, we probably will not get
No.
a contract awarded in time, uh, you know, and able to use the funds that the federal government has given us. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Again, my, my, my comment is that I'm not opposed to the improvements that we're discussing here today. Matter of fact, I, I like the fact that we're going to bring the committee room into this, this room here. That makes a lot of sense to me. But it's the process. I mean, we probably should have undertaken this well in advance of today because if you're talking three hundred thousand, four hundred thousand.
You'll get a hundred.
We're going to authorize that today. We're not quite sure what that's going to be, who the contractor is. I have a real difficult problem with that, so, thank you. Any other comments on resolutions? Supervisor Ronan?
Thank you. Maybe the resolution should state that the funds, where it says expended from various departmental budget codes, should say ARPA funds.
They're not really, they're not, there are ARPA funds that have been reclaimed by the county that need to be obligated. So.
Again, it's not the issue of ARPA funds. It's the process that we're undertaking today to execute this. You know, whether it's ARPA funds, sales tax funding, doesn't matter to me. Just what matters to me is who we're going to award it to and how much we're going to pay for it. That's all. Supervisor Echov.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had a comment about this and then a question about something else. John, are you saying that we would try to obligate the full seven hundred thousand for this project? And then once bids come in and we figure that out, it'll be past the December thirty first and we can use less? No.
No, if, if we don't obligate the roughly seven hundred thousand, and, and I apologize, it's taken a while to, to identify that money. You know, so we, we were able to do that by the first part of October. So that's why the process we're following now. Uh, we thought the design would be completed before this meeting, however, it was not. But we're not going to obligate all the money against this specific boardroom.
How much?
We're going to obligate whatever is necessary for the boardroom. And then the rest of it is going, I'm looking at Kevin, Heyjos, but I, I, the rest of it, we think for the, the roof, right?
Yeah.
For, for this room alone, and I just want to speak to Jack's question first. So we had LaBella, who's our term agreement. So we don't have to bid necessarily to the consulting part of it. They put a quick design together for us. We have a design. We've kind of talked about some of the changes that were in that design. We sent it back to them. We are expecting them to give us a final and then an estimate on it. It'll be an engineer's estimate, an engineer's estimate alone to give us approximately what it'll cost. I think the number that John's using at three hundred thousand dollars range is probably in that realm. Uh, as far as bidding it, it will go to bid. Uh, and as we do with some of our other bids, we award to lowest responsive bidder. Uh, and there's certain times that we don't have necessarily the bid in hand. We award during committee to the lowest responsive bidder, then we come back to the board with the tab sheet that shows what the bidders were. So I'm not sure if John's proposing that for next month to say we'll award to lowest responsive bidder, and then when we get the bids in, hand it out to everybody and show them the bids. I'm sorry, I don't know what the other question was. I think that kind of covers it. So as far as it roof goes.
Main area.
Yeah, I, I don't know if we can get it. There, certainly the chimney is the one that we're working on now to get taken down and then replaced. But again, like everything, it goes through the process of engineering. I have to do the testing for asbestos in the mastic and such in the roof area. So we, I mean, that would be done, but I don't know that it'll take all that money. I think we had a quote for that type of work was about eighty thousand dollars. So.
Follow-ups? Did you have follow-up?
Me too.
I had a question about something else for the county clerk. I assume the answer's no, and I should have asked the committee, but can we seek reimbursement for these mortgage tax expenses for previous years? No. Thank you.
Who else? Supervisor Wild?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I, Mr. Diamond has a point, Supervisor Diamond, you know, um. One of the things I was thinking of as this discussion was ongoing is that Washington County took all their ARPA funds and put it to their general fund. Uh, why can't we take this money and just drop it into our general fund and then reallocate it to this project and allow us to feel comfortable about the money is being spent?
If, if I could, Mr. Chair, under the ARPA federal regulations, that's exactly what we have done. This is the next necessary step because we actually have to have it under contract by the end of the year. It has to be obligated. So we've already done those initial steps of pulling it back, uh, including it under our, um, our net allocation that we're allowed to take from the ARPA funds. And now this is the first, maybe, this is, this is one of those necessary steps to obligate the funds under a contract before the end of this year. Because if it's not obligated, then as of December, January first, twenty twenty five, the funds go back to the US Treasury. Because if it's not obligated, then as of December, January first, twenty twenty-five, the funds go back to the U.S. Treasury.
So just as a follow-up, all the, all the counties that took this money and put it to their general fund, they've had to allocate that by December thirty-first also?
They've had to obligate it over the last four years.
Supervisor McGowan?
Yeah, I guess by that, we're a little short on the, the front steps, Kevin. You know, in the grass areas, but the, you know, we've talked about the steps for, for years. And they're, you know, they are quite sad. I mean, is that, I mean, I understand the roofs, but you know, once you, you start one section, it's just, you know, one after the other. I know the fireplace, or the fireplace, the chimney is, you know, important, very important. That's been leaking since as long as I can remember being up here. You know, so these allocations, I, I guess, I guess my question, our area down to the last wire of time. And, you know, we're, we're rushing now. How long have we've known these, these, these funds have been in the ARPA? I know. But, you know, the board one, we've talked about for years. You know, the chimney, we know, and the steps. You know, the roof, all right, we, we can't really anticipate that, you know. But, you know, now we're, now we're here to make a robust decision. I'm happy to hear that we're not taking the money out of the general fund as per se for the boardroom project. But, you know, I, I just, I feel it's a rush right at the end. Because now we have, you know, a month and a half to make a decision and have a contract. And, and, you know, that's not fair to us who now have to explain to the people out there that we're taking ARPA money to redo our boardroom. I'm pretty sure my phone's going to be ringing tonight, so.
I don't know if that was a question directed.
Well, I guess I have to address the chair, then the chair has to go to you, and then it has to come this way. It's a triangular thing.
This money was deemed, we went after this money, I think it was two, three months ago. They made a list of people who hadn't spent the money. It's gone through committee. Most people have seen the list of where, where people who hadn't expended the money, they went, I believe they reached out to a lot of them. And said, are you going to expend the money or not going to expend the money? We're taking it back to use it to make upgrades to the facility that hasn't been upgraded.
I think it's great.
As far as, as far as, please let me speak. As far as the boardroom goes, you know, this is something that John, it's been a passion of his to make upgrades this boardroom so our constituents can hear us through these Zoom meetings or whatever you want to call them. Anyways, he's worked on this. We worked with the contractor. I've only seen the plans a day or two ago. They're not extravagant. Everything costs a lot of money. They're simple. We're kind of going back to where we were when I came here nineteen years ago. We're going back, we're going to hold our committee meetings in this room like we used to do. Very simple, very well attended when they had to be. That's the plan. It's going, we're kind of going backwards. The funding process using this, it's not excess, but it's ARPA funds that were donated, or not donated, but given to different organizations two years ago, three years ago. And we're just reclaiming it and we're going to put it towards this, this building. Now, as far as, I would be ashamed that we can't take ARPA funds to fix the roof and the chimney down there and do a little upgrade. It may seem like a lot of money, the upgrade, but I think we're hoping that maybe some of the work can be done by county employees, that we don't have to hire a contractor. I don't know. But that's what we're doing with the ARPA funds. That's what I know about it. It's been discussed, I think. It should not be a surprise to anybody in this room that we're reclaiming ARPA funds. It's all gone through committee. And if I'm wrong, please let me know. But I believe that we've discussed that on many occasions. Supervisor Conover?
Yeah, I mean, it's, I understand the concern.
Can you pull your mic down, please? Thank you.
I understand the concern that's been raised. But let's look at the date. Our public works, the people can move quickly because of consultants that we already have on retainer that can inspect the work and get it done. Basically, what we're hearing today is use it or lose it. Use it or lose it. And, you know, we can, you know, howl at the moon. But I would give our staff credit for putting together a program that hopefully is going to meet the requirements and so they can utilize these funds for county work, so that we don't lose the funds. Once again, I just would remind everyone, you know, the date we're sitting here. And this has to be done very, very quickly. And so I'd recommend that be approved. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, could I just clarify one point? Just to make sure everyone understands, every dollar that we're talking about was a dollar that this board already approved by resolution to give to a third party. And each of those parties signed legally binding contracts with the county. So all of these funds were under contract to those different groups. And those contracts had to be canceled and the money's recouped, which is why we now, that's what this is. This is money that was issued already that is now coming, that was under contract to various different groups. Which is now, those contracts have been canceled and the money has come back and been reallocated into the county for county use. And that's why we have a deadline that we have.
One other point, and I, I thank Mr. Chairman, I defer to the county attorney. But all of these contracts we have with people, they were awarded by this board and by the ARPA committee. Those individuals who have those contracts have to agree that they're not going to spend that money. We do not have the authority to go in and say, okay, we don't think you're going to spend this money, we're taking it back. There has to be a mutual agreement between the person who held the contract and the county that that money could be returned. So it's not, it was a unfortunate, long process.
It, it was a lot of work for the planning department to actually do those. My office didn't do those coordinations to cancel. It was the planning department doing face-to-face and by phone with each of those recipients to make it happen.
Supervisor Bean?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Chairman, but it sounds to me, after listening to this conversation, we have pretty much followed procedurally the way we're supposed to do this. Have we not?
Yeah.
Correct? So I'm not sure why we're having this conversation.
Well, could I address that?
Sure.
My question is the process. It's not the money. It's not the ARPA money, whether it's general fund money. We're talking about a project that probably in this room could cost up to three hundred thousand dollars. This resolution is asking me to vote either yes or no. Resolution does not have a contractor and doesn't have a fixed amount. That's my issue with the resolution today. It's not where the money's coming from. It's not the improvements that need to be done because we all agree with that. I've sat over here for almost eight years and it's freezing in the wintertime. So I would like to see some improvements done in regards to that. But my hangup is, how much is it going to cost and who's going to be awarded the work? Without knowing that, I can't with good conscience support this resolution today. It's up to the board. You know, they're going to make a decision, but I'm just stating my position going forward as to why I brought this up.
Thank you. Supervisor Wild and Supervisor McGowan?
Thank you. Voting no basically says that we give the money back, in my mind. And I think it's the mind of a number of supervisors here. So I'm in support of making this happen. And I put my trust in the county administrator and his teams to make it happen. So we're doing it the right way.
Supervisor McGowan, last comment.
Yeah, thank you. If we have some rough plans of, you know, what they saw, of, you know, how come that couldn't have been distributed with us today? So we had an idea what we're talking about. You know, going in, and I understand what Jack, but I, Supervisor Diamond, but I do, I do understand the urgency and, and, and the process of how we're doing it. So if we reword the resolution, if we could, to either or add on to, because if, if we come in at three hundred thousand for this room, that's still at least four hundred thousand. So, but we need chimney, we need, you know, locks. Do we add on to that to say that we'll use it for these other projects? Or could we? That we know that has to be done? I don't want to lose the money. Because like I said, I, I, I know, I know the process that got us here and I know the money that was returned. I'm fully aware of the ARPA. So can we add on to that resolution so it's just not here? But we could get some form of, we, we, we have costs for the front steps, we have some costs for the chimney. Would, you know, they're making it a little easier? Question?
I don't know. We have two.
Hey, thank you, Kevin. I'll try to address that, but I will remind you all that I'm very short-staffed at DPW. I have two engineers right now and an assistant engineer who's chasing the contractors all over the county. I cannot conceivably put out all these bids before the end of the year to expend all that money. I can, and, and talking about the steps, I don't have a cost for the steps. I have two hundred thousand dollars left over from a courthouse project. That's not going to go away. It's going to stay in there, so I don't have to rush to get a step bid out. Now, if you want me to, then I'm going to drop everything else to be able to get those bids out. It's, it's, there's not a lot of time before now in the end of the year to do a minimum of a two to three week bid process after putting a scope of work together. And Brad, you look at me like that, but that's what our purchasing agent will want me to do. So two to three week bid process, receiving those bids and then coming back through committee and through the board to award it to whoever that contract may be and expend the money by the end of the year. So I will certainly do whatever the board wishes I do to drop everything else so I can get bids out. That's what they, that's what they like me to do.
Kevin, I'm sorry, you, you looked at my face and, and, and felt that I was actually saying, but they, that was my total confusion look, but not for what you're doing. I understand you, you know, I appreciate you.
Yeah, I do.
But that chimney has been going on for years and those steps have been going on for years. And why we don't have some form of contractual agreement somewhere along or a contract of a figure to get it fixed? It just amazes me that we're, that was my look, but that was, you know, whatever. You know, that, that, to save the money, to save the money and, and do it, I, I will hesitantly move forward on that resolution, just to grab, just to make sure.
All right. Any other discussion? We have roll call, we forgot to request a roll call. Anybody could have probably wished to chime in on any of the resolutions? None? I guess we, you can move to vote on resolution? Everybody?
Yeah, sorry. Okay.
Mr. Chairman? I just want to note that, well, I'm sorry.
I'm just kidding.
Going back to three seventy-four, I won't be authorizing the public hearing, but I'm going to be seeking further clarification at a later date.
That's correct.
Okay. No, I'm just.
I think it's, I think the real issue was, there's a local law. It was revised by resolutions, which you can't really do. We're trying to clean that up. That's really what we're trying to, from my limited knowledge of the law, I think that's what we're trying to do. When you pass a local law, you, you can only amend it by amending the local law. And we did it in the past, I guess, by passing resolution. I believe that's it, John.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And you're not out, Ford.
Resolution three thirty-three, making supplemental appropriations. Mr. Cresito?
Yes.
Mr. Merlino?
Yes.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
No.
Mr. Strainer?
Yes.
Mr. Etu?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Mayday?
Yes.
Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Ms. Gilligan?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Patchett?
Yes.
Mr. Drossi?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes with eight hundred ninety-four, I'm sorry, eight hundred twenty-four votes in favor. Resolution three thirty-four, amending Warren County budget for twenty twenty-four for various departments within Warren County. Mr. Cresito?
Yes.
Mr. Merlino?
Yes.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
No.
Mr. Strainer?
Yes.
Mr. Etu?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Mayday?
Yes.
Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Ms. Gilligan?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Patchett?
Yes.
Mr. Drossi?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes with eight hundred twenty-four votes in favor. Resolution three seventy, amending table of organization and Warren County salary and compensation plan. Mr. Cresito?
Yes.
Mr. Merlino?
Yes.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yeah.
Mr. Strainer?
Yes.
Mr. Etu?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayday?
Yes.
Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Ms. Gilligan?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yeah.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Patchett?
Yes.
Mr. Drossi?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes with nine hundred thirteen votes in favor. Next vote is on resolutions three seventy-seven through three eighty-two, all finance and appropriating funds and establishing capital projects. Mr. Cresito?
Yes.
Mr. Merlino?
Yes.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Thought we were going three seventy-seven to three eighty.
You said three seventy-seven to three eighty-two.
Ah, you're right, true. Because that'd be a no. So I'll go no.
No, okay. Mr. Strainer?
Yes.
Mr. Etu?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayday?
Yes.
Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Ms. Gilligan?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Patchett?
Yes.
Mr. Drossi?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolutions three seventy-seven through three eighty-two passed with a vote of eight hundred and twenty-four votes in favor. Resolution three hundred and eighty-four, this is authorizing the agreement with a contractor to be determined for upgrades to the boardroom. Mr. Cresito?
Yes.
Mr. Merlino?
Yes.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Strainer?
Yes.
Mr. Etu?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Mayday?
Yes.
Mr. Diamond?
No.
Ms. Gilligan?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Patchett?
Yes.
Mr. Drossi?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes with eight hundred sixty-eight votes in favor. Next vote is on resolutions three eighty-five through three eighty-eight. Mr. Cresito?
Yes.
Mr. Merlino?
Yes.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
What numbers are we through?
Three eighty-five through three eighty-eight.
Those were a yes.
Mr. Strainer?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Etoo?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Mayday?
Yes.
Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Ms. Gilligan?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Patchett?
Yes.
Mr. Drossi?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution three eighty-five through three eighty-eight passed with a vote of nine hundred thirteen votes in favor. Next vote is on resolutions three eighty-nine through three ninety-two. Mr. Crescito?
Yes.
Mr. Merlino?
Yes.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
No.
Mr. Strainer?
Yes.
Mr. Etoo?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Mayday?
Yes.
Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Ms. Gilligan?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Patchett?
Yes.
Mr. Drossi?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolutions three eighty-nine through three ninety-two passed with a vote of eight hundred and twenty-four in favor. And this vote is on resolutions three ninety-three and three ninety-four. Mr. Crescito?
Yes.
Mr. Merlino?
Yes.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Strainer?
Yes.
Mr. Etoo?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Mayday?
Yes.
Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Ms. Gilligan?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Patchett?
Yes.
Mr. Drossi?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolutions three ninety-three through three ninety-four passed with a vote of nine hundred thirteen votes in favor. And resolution three ninety-six, which is enacting local law number six of twenty twenty-four. Mr. Crescito?
Yes.
Mr. Merlino?
Yes.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
No.
Mr. Strainer?
Yes.
Mr. Etoo?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Mayday?[1489.24]